A public hearing on an ordinance amending a conditional use permit for a four-story hotel building in a GB general business district located at 1005 Hawthorne Boulevard in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. Barb?
This is a request that ties back to the conditional use permit that was granted in August of last year. That was granted by ordinance 5254 and at that time, and a copy of that is in your packet, there was a long list of conditions that must be met at the time the final site plan was submitted for review by staff. When we received that site plan, we requested several items be revised in order to bring it in compliance with that ordinance and were advised by the applicant that two of the items they could not satisfy or wanted to have changed. And so, at that point, we set it for your agenda this evening and Planning and Zoning Commission last week. Those two items originally were requests to not lower the site two feet as required by the ordinance in August. That was something that their architect at the time had offered and upon further engineering, their engineer stated it was not able to be met. The second item was to not place the fence where it was shown on the site plan in August, which was just on the backside of the curb of the parking lot, but further north 60 feet so that it would be along the fence line with the neighbors. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting last week, after much discussion, there was indication that the not lowering the site was not so much for the reasons of engineering and sewer and not being able to sewer the property correctly, but for curb appeal and the aesthetics and potential implications for ADA access. So, ultimately, after much discussion last week, the commission, and you have a summary of the public comment that was received in the discussions that evening in your packet. The Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations, which is what has been incorporated in the ordinance in front of you this evening, is to allow them to not lower the site two feet, to let it stand at the height it was originally. And then also, they did require that the fence stay where the site plan showed it always, two feet, or on the backside of the curb closer to the parking lot, not up by the property line. So, that is the language that you have in your ordinance this evening and there are attachments to that ordinance. Attachment A is the grading plan, which was submitted in February and shows the elevation at the current level, not two feet lower. And then attachment B, which is a dimension plan, which shows, has been redlined to show where the fence would be located there by the parking lot. So, those that were in the Planning Commission meeting, they redlined it immediately afterwards and that's what's been included as attachment A and B to the ordinance this evening. Happy to answer any questions. I know, I feel there is a public comment as well and the engineers here receiving if there are questions for the applicant.
Do you have any questions or discussions? Is it going to be a public comment first?
Public talk first.
Mrs. Ewing?
Good evening. I don't have any additional comments from the Planning and Zoning meeting from last week. I just wanted to reiterate that I have concerns about the location of the fence. I was very happy that Holiday Inn Express was willing to move it back to the original location. And part of my concerns continue in that I want to make sure that drainage is appropriate and having the fence moved to the property line would have prevented the water flowing off of my property, which I have a problem with due to the fact that the city has not extended the street runoff drain, which is supposed to be toward the back of my property. And as a consequence, I have water from the top of the hill running down the street into the culvert. And then when the culvert ends, it crisscrosses my property and then flows directly into the Holiday Inn Express property where it used to cut directly across and then flow further down the line. So, with the placement of the Holiday Inn Express where it is, I do have concerns for the drainage and express that last week at the meeting, in addition to my fear that the fence would cause a lot of problems for my trees on my property. And that I had thought the word buffer meant that the things would be buffered and not have a fence. So, I want to hope that the city council approves the, having the fence remain where it was originally by the parking lot. It was never meant to be a screen from a four-story hotel. It was meant to be a security help to prevent people from the hotel wandering where they're not supposed to be. So, thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Ewing?
Thank you very much. I'm David Ewing. My back door, my property will be 90 feet from the back door of the hotel. And I appreciate you've heard me before, but this is my last chance to say what I need to say. And one is, I'm disappointed that the town is allowing a hotel to be built in this particular area, a four-story hotel. No one does that. If you look around the area, there has never been a hotel that's next to a neighborhood. You might find a two-story or a three-story next to an R2, but you won't find one next to an R1. So, I wanted to express my disappointment that the hotel is going to be there. Mr. Renfro, you had made some comments, a silique, a couple of five-minute silique is talking about the property itself. And this gets my chance to rebut. You talked about the 96% of the neighborhood says that this particular hotel will harm the neighborhood. Now, we had 64 people sign the petition, but I could have easily got several hundred people, most of that neighborhood there. And if you don't think it's going to cause a harm to the neighborhood, just look, next time you leave the building here, go down, look at any of the big buildings and look at the houses next to that. You tell me how many that we really have that have healthy neighborhoods around those big businesses. And that's important. But on top of that, I guess what really, what occurs here is why, and this is where I don't think, I got your business about, we need the business here to get the taxes. We do. I'm not stupid. I can understand that. We need to have the money coming in. But my question is, why did we need a hotel here at this place when there's so many other places that that hotel could have been in? A business that's open technically 24 hours a day, you know, having things and noises and all those particular items that takes place. So, I'm always disappointed and I hope that doesn't happen again. The lowering of the grade that they had mentioned, you know, that we tried to do, two feet doesn't make that much difference. It really doesn't. But the whole idea was the neighborhood got together with the architect and we made certain agreements. And we're worried that those agreements are not going to be met, whatever they're going to be. We talked about the lighting being low. We talked about the amount of trees. We talked about where the berm was going to start. So, it bothers me that we get together and we make some sort of agreement that we have here and worried that it's not going to be met, regardless of it's two feet here or 36 windows instead of 24 that we talked about in our conference or anything else that takes place over here. And we do hope, and I guess this is the last disappointment, was that the city was unable, they did not, or they weren't able, to help us protect the neighborhood. This was something that we did. And the Planning and Zoning was really good about trying to get us together to make this compromise, but it would have been a lot better if the city had been able to be there and put their smarts to the system so we could have a hotel in this, if it was going to be in this location, and protect us from all the different things, from garbage, from lights, from sounds, from everything else that takes place. Ms. Dickinson said we did have some photos. If you'd like to look at the grade, you'll see that because of the grade, they're going to see that hotel far a long ways away. And even the neighbors that are 300, you know, you only notify people 300 feet within, but they're going to see it way up the street. And you can't tell me that hotel's not going to affect, you know, people a block. That's what the people that signed the petition said, you know, this is harmful. Anyway, thank you for letting me have my say. I appreciate it very much.
All right. Gene Peoples?
I have one picture I wanted to show whoever has the computer. It's a JPEG. That's all. Hello, I'm Gene Peoples. I live at 1017 One Nut Lane. And I know it's late in the game, but I still oppose the hotel being there, just because of there's a, like he said earlier, there's more areas that the hotel could be placed at. And I just wanted to pull up a quick picture that would show exactly what I'm talking about. One second. Okay, as you can see on the screen there, you can see the, in the bottom left corner there, the area that's been prepped for the hotel itself. And right across the street from that, right across Highway 50 there, you can see a big old green area, almost twice the size of the area that's been prepped. And along that street where the green area is at, there's a bunch of hotels right there already. So, to me, it would be common sense to put all the hotels in the same row. So, it'd be easier to access, it'd be easier to get to, instead of putting it on this half of the street where you gotta get off the highway and turn and turn and turn to actually get to the hotel. So, that seems like a common sense move that I think the city, if we have a chance to actually look at and please look at that before you make your final decisions. And that's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. That is all who has signed up for the public hearing. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak at this point?
I'll make a couple of comments real quick. So, one, I want to address the zoning and the site location of the hotel. Really, the only control the city has over that has to do with their zoning ordinances. And that piece of property has been zoned a long time. This project could have happened 15 years ago there at that spot because the zoning has always been appropriate for that. We don't work with the businesses specifically as far as selecting their location where they go. They have their own site consultants that come in and they determine where they want their business to go. We review it from a staff standpoint of whether or not the zoning allows for that and what conditions they have to meet should they choose to be there. I would echo Mr. Ewing's concerns and this is some concern I've had since the Planning and Zoning Commission is, the city through the Planning and Zoning Commission and the council did send the business and the architect back to meet with the neighborhood to see if a compromise could be reached. And Holiday Inn did put the suggestion on the table for lowering the grade two feet. That was done at their suggestion, not the city's request. So, I do echo the concern of the residents that we kind of met a good faith agreement there. And I have some concern about moving that line requirement at this time. I understand there was some concern from the engineering regarding providing sewer service and those types of things. I think staff, city staff has done a good job of helping address that concern and remedying that in a way that they still need, the obligation they put on the table by lowering the grade by two feet. And so, I guess that's my concern is the statement that we send both to the businesses that want to come do business in Warrensburg, but also to the residents that live here on a regular basis. I understand that business is important, but I think we need to do that with the integrity back to our citizens that when we reach a negotiation that we're going to help maintain that line, that agreement in the sand for as long as we can. Under extenuating circumstances, we may have to come back and revisit those types of things. But in this situation, I don't know if I personally agree with removing the two-foot requirement for aesthetic purposes. I think a case could have been made if it was a sewer issue, but since that's been remedied, I don't know if that issue still sits there. And I am concerned about the message that sends to our citizens changing this late in the game. I think it sends the message that we'll agree to one thing at one point and then later on we'll come back and change it when it's more convenient to change it. I'm not sure if that's the way the city wants to do business.
That's a good question. Barb, you said that the two feet, they may have made a comment that that affected their ability to make it ADA accessible?
That was discussed at the commission meeting, yes.
How would the grading affect that, I guess?
It was the, the engineer.
Kevin Staret with HG Consult, the civil engineering on this site. We have a sidewalk that runs a long Hawthorne and per ADA requirements, we have to provide a sidewalk from there into the site. And right now, the sidewalk is at a, we're kind of sitting down a little bit and to lower it two more feet would actually take us out of ADA compliance. So, we're, that's the, that's one of the reasons we want to just maintain the level that we're at. One of the first thing is, when this was agreed to, the architect, he was kind of speaking out of turn when it comes to grading because no grades had been established on this site at that time. So, my first thing is, is you're going to lower it two feet from what? What datum are we talking about? Is there, there was no hard elevation given to lower two feet from. So, that was my first concern. And then the other is, the way we grade, typically grade these sites is you like to, you actually like to have your building well above the curb line, but we're setting basically even. At, only at the drive, you've got to understand that Hawthorne, you know, has got a fairly steep grade. So, on one end, we're actually sitting about six feet below the curb and we're, on the other end, we're sitting maybe a foot above. And then right in the middle, we're about even. And that's how you, when you're grading your drives and come in to keep from getting, where you either gouge or, you know, or high center, you try to keep your grades relatively level there so that you can get a, you know, not only the ADA, but the drive itself. And so, and not only that, we have, there's an existing retaining wall there that was put in there just specifically for this, for this site. And right now, the way we have it graded, we can actually use the wall as it is to go in and cut down even further. We'd actually maybe have a little integrity problem with the bottom of the wall. And so, there, that's the, that was the only reason that I only wanted, you know, to look at this one item. We've addressed all the other items as far as that goes. So, the good faith part of it is definitely there. This is just one item and it's, it would make, they actually make the building look like it's somewhat have been in a hole, which from a commercial point of view, that's not desired as far as that goes. So...
The sidewalk you're discussing is not there yet, right?
It's not there yet. It's been required of us to put the sidewalk in, yes.
Correct. But that sidewalk can be adjusted accordingly to meet ADA standards, right?
If, well, we may not be, if we lower it, then we may have a tough time figuring out how to get it in there. Yeah.
You can't lower the sidewalk? I mean, I'm not an engineer.
Well, we've got the sidewalk where it's out at the curb line, which is established already. That's there. And then we've got it here. And if we're, if we lower it, we get into a slope condition that we may not be able to make the ADA. Right now, it's very, very close, but two feet would definitely take us out of compliance.
Can you talk to the rest of the requirement, the good faith requirements, the 30-foot buffer zone? Can you talk to that a little bit?
Yeah, we've still got the buffer in there. We've still got the berm. The 10-foot berm is in there. We actually had this very wall that I was referring to. We've actually had to extend it around and come around the back just to hold up this berm in order to get it in there above the existing grade as it is. So, there's been a lot of work done to the site to make sure that we've, we held up that end of it. But, so, the bermings there, the trees are there, the reduction in the pavement has been taken care of. We've addressed all of them. This is the only one that we're taking exception to, only because of a grading issue that probably shouldn't have been, shouldn't have been addressed at that time before the grading ever got, you know, got going as far as that goes.
One of the concerns, as I understand it, was the type of tree selection on the conifers. It just says pine and you wanted a faster-growing species intermingled. And I think...
Yeah, we called out a, we have blue spruce and Douglas firs as the two species of evergreens that are shown on top of the berm. And yeah, it was mentioned that they would like to see a different, and they're welcome to. We have no problem with putting a different species in, whatever they'd like.
There was no language changed at P&amp;Z.
Right.
So, if you all want to specify species, the current language does not specify species.
Does our ordinance not say once 10 trees, I believe was the number?
It requires a diversity, but it doesn't require the exact species.
Okay.
Neither your landscaping ordinance in general, or your ordinance granting the conditional use permit at 52 or 54.
Okay.
So, if you want to require certain species, you need to amend the ordinance that's in front of you this evening.
We're not opposed to any particular species.
A Colorado blue spruce is a lovely tree, but it's a very slow-growing tree.
Correct.
And most certainly is not going to provide any screening in my lifetime.
Right.
So, something a little faster than that.
Faster-growing?
Although white pine is lovely, it'll grow a lot faster.
I think the lumber industry actually uses like a lob lolly pine, I think, the fast-growing.
We're fine with whatever species they'd like to see, you know, as far as that goes.
Well, I guess though, in order to meet the good faith agreement, we need to make sure that that's documented here before...
You can, you can document it with species language in your ordinance. Otherwise, I am asking them nicely. I can't require.
Correct. Correct.
Would that affect, that would just affect this, to adjust an ordinance?
Yeah, you have under item eight, this ordinance amending ordinance 5254. So, in section two is the language relieving them of the two-foot lowering. Section three holds them to the fence location. You would want to add an additional section, maybe 3.5, with language about species if you want. And you, I think you could just do that as a...
An amendment to that.
I don't think that has to be an amendment to 5254 because 5254 didn't provide species. It just said generic language. You need to amend it or would you?
Well, any, any alteration of the conditions is an amendment of that ordinance. So, I think it would be.
Then you would be amending...
Could we have verbiage, a conifer as, a fast-growing conifer as recommended by the Missouri forester?
You could. I don't think you have to speak to a specific section of the ordinance. I think you can say that the ordinance is amended by adding the following.
I'm just concerned if we don't do something, as you said, you're, you're left with highly recommending nicely that, that we provide that mix of fast-growing conifers and, you know, whatever. And I'd like to see us lock that down before we do anything with it.
I have some hesitation with the vagueness of fast-growing conifer.
Okay.
I think that leaves you open to a red cedar tree.
That's correct.
How does the neighborhood feel about a red cedar tree?
I don't know what any trees are, so...
Surprisingly, I know everything.
So, I think if you want to say white pine, you say white pine.
Pine, yeah. Pine, yeah. And I think that's what we should do. Oh, that would be my recommendation.
Hold on one second. I'll get to you. One second. Sorry. Thank you. Is there any more discussion on the leveling two-foot up and down anymore on that one?
There's a hand up back there.
We'll get there in just one second. I'll get there in just one second. Sorry. Yes. I'll have him go, then I'll have you go. Hold on just one second. They'll ask for public here in a second. Is there any more discussion on the two-foot raise or lower?
I have a concern with that too because, I mean, our citizens went out and negotiated in good faith. Now, if I'm being told that the person who the Holiday Inn Express sent to negotiate was not the person who had the capability to negotiate the deal, that was probably a bad move on their part. You know, this, this plan, and this is just my opinion, but this plan, when it initially went to planning and zoning before it went back to the citizens, was not going real well. And that's why the architect said, let's go back to the citizens and discuss this. And then the citizens have made a deal. And now, I feel we need to, you know, wear their voice at this point. They have a voice. They've come back, they voiced it again. And I think we need to protect their, what they have negotiated, you know, as far as this lowering it to two feet.
Any more, yes?
So, you all are okay with lowering it two feet with what Harold said?
I think that was the initial, the initial deal that was on the table was lower it two feet. And I haven't heard anything that, you know, other than an ADA that we can lower. The sidewalks can be adjusted. I mean, the stuff where, the stuff where leveling this to is not even in place yet besides the street.
I think, go ahead.
I think the, the comment that I heard, the two feet is a non-issue as far as, that's what I heard anyway. Correct me if I'm speaking out of turn.
To me personally, what's two feet? But, it is an indication, if you're going to come back off of that, then what else are you going to come back off? So, it does have a little element of distrust. Really, for me personally, two feet is inconsequential.
Okay. Thank you.
I think at the planning and zoning, what I commented on is the fact of building a building that you know isn't going to look right as a community and allowing that to happen. I think as a planning and zoning, and I think as a council, we do have a duty not only to protect the citizens and their location of their homes, but protect the businesses. And unfortunately, they had an architect go talk to the community at that point. I didn't think that was the greatest idea, but it turned out to be a great idea. And it turned out to be fruitful for the process moving forward. Now, they've come back and said the two-foot puts us into a bind. The sewer problem isn't an issue. The wall, although is an issue, isn't an issue any of us really want to hear about or care about, to be honest with you. And the sidewalk moving up and down really isn't that issue. But, if you go to Crossside Cricket or if you go to the Best Western, the station, those are buildings that are in holes. Those are buildings that the water flows into the building. And I think we are putting this building in that situation. So, 20 years down the road, if Holiday Inn has to move and they leave that building vacant, now we have a vacant building that turns out that is in a hole like that. And to me, I understand protecting the neighborhood, we're past that stage unfortunately at this point. And the neighborhood had been there for a long time. It'd been 25 years since you've been told nothing would be built there. I think that's right. Unfortunately, that is the main corridor to Warrensburg. And that has been zoned R4 since it's been zoned, as long as I've been told. I haven't seen it any other way. And there is a hotel that wants to build there. They made a mistake. And it's two-foot. The owners, last week at the planning and zoning, totally against that two-foot and totally against it. Today, it's not a big deal. I honestly don't think it's that big a deal. And for us to try to say it's a big deal or try to protect the neighborhood over two feet, I think we're missing the boat here. The boat has already sailed on protecting the neighborhood. And I know how you guys feel. And I felt that way too when I had a house in that position. I hear you. I've said that. But unfortunately, the town's growing. And this is one of those painful growths that we have to go through. But two feet, if it's going to keep them from building the building or put the building up, they haven't said that. I'm saying it. Nobody's said that to me at all. Nobody's trying to scare us. But to me, we're arguing over two feet that honestly, isn't it that big of an issue? It's really not going to be that big of a concern, but it's going to create a huge problem 10 years, 20 years down the road if that water actually drains into the building. And it does look like it's in a hole. And we do have a four-story building that looks wrong. That's a lot of what, in my opinion, has happened to Warrensburg. We've piecemealed. We've done little things here and there and nothing connects like it should. We need to stop doing that. And I, I hear you guys. The Ewings, I know... The Ewing's, I know, I feel the same way you do. I know you don't see that or feel that, but to me, the council's job is not to tell the business where to be, how to do it. It is our job to make sure that it's done right and it's protecting. We have done that to an extent. We've extended that. There's more to it than that, unfortunately. I think it's important that this hotel gets built for what White Mountain Air Force Base sees in it, what University of Central Missouri sees in it, not just for the taxes, but what it does to our community, what it does to that major corridor, it shows growth. And as much as I want to scream it from the mountaintop, that's what needs to happen for our community.
Mr. Ewing?
Thank you. Well, we were talking about good faith, and of course, like my wife said, it's worried about whether the things will come out. And I don't know if this is appropriate, whether it can just be a soft request or if it's an ordinance. The things that... If you look on the plan, like the lighting in the back, it's twenty-five feet high. You know, that's way above the berm and stuff. And we had talked about keeping the lighting below the berm. I mean, they can put lights along the security, they don't have parking back there. They just need to have it up. So, I'm worried about other agreements that should have been there, even though they weren't directly written, although I thought they were, too. Because that would further protect the neighborhood. We're talking about lighting, you know, the trees, all that's important. So, you know, when my wife says two feet, well, maybe you're right, maybe not. But, the thing is, is what else are we gonna come back on when we said, hey, try and keep the impact on the neighborhood as small as possible?
Well, I think you definitely have a council that's sitting up here that'll be here next year that will not allow something else to come back, obviously, so...
And I agree with Mr. Ewing there. I mean, but on another note, I mean, is, yes, the hotels bought the land, the hotel's planning on building there, but it's still our job to protect the neighborhood to the extent we can protect the neighborhood. You know, and that's why I... They put a plan in place that the citizens liked enough that they came back. I mean, there was twelve people, if I remember right, speaking against it at the previous one. And at the next planning and zoning meeting, it was... Some of those people came and spoke for it because of the changes that were agreed to. And now, even though they're small changes, but... And they're saying that it's not that big of a deal. It is correct. What's, you know, what's next? What are we gonna hit next? And it's gonna be, okay, hey, well, this isn't gonna work. The wall was there when we negotiated it, so, you know, that wall was in place when we negotiated the deal. So, to say that the structure of that wall now is gonna be an issue because we lower it two more feet, you know, I mean... You know, as far as the land you pointed out, up there, that green land, that land actually went up for auction just recently, with no bidders. So, unfortunately, nobody has any interest in that land, you know, so...
Did you have something you'd like to say?
Um, yeah, I'm sorry. It was just something that was kind of questioning the sidewalk. Really, I mean, if it's two feet, it's not that big of a deal, it's not that big of a deal. But, I was just kind of curious when it comes to ADA, what's the possibility of using switchbacks for sidewalks to lower the elevation or the incline of the sidewalk going into the building?
Yeah, switchbacks are... They are used if you've got lots of room to run parallel, do landings, run parallel, do landings, if you've got the room to do those. I've done them before on sites where we've had that happen, where we had lots of linear feet to do that. I'm not saying that it can't be done on this, but there is a pretty short distance from the road to the back of them. You know, where the sidewalk's coming in, we're only talking twenty feet. So, that is a consideration. But, in this case, I don't know that that... We'd have to be doing quite a bit. We'd be doing sixty or seventy feet of sidewalk to get the twenty feet in, kind of a thing, as far as that goes. And again, we're not coming back again. We only got the one thing. Everything else has been addressed and is on the plans, and they are completed. So, to say we're gonna keep coming back and wanting to change different, more things that were agreed to, we're finished right here. We only want the one thing. And it's only because of the grading issue that, again, I... Yeah, the architect, he kind of... Yeah, he probably spoke out of turn, as far as that goes. But nevertheless, we do need to make this thing, as Casey said, it does need to look right. I mean, just for to protect the owners, the value of it and all that. So, with that, you know, all we're asking for is the one, you know, to keep the grading the way it is, just to make it look right. We've addressed all the other... We're still agreeing to everything, and we're not... We're done. We're done with it, so...
You say everything is complete, then the lighting plan is...
Yeah, the lighting has been done. It's still subject to the staff, you know, review and revision, as far as that goes. I didn't do the site lighting plan myself.
Okay.
But it's still subject to, you know, for permitting, it's still subject to being revised if they so want to do that. Didn't have shields on at cutoffs, lowered the, you know, the poles, I mean, all that. The lighting plan was done by the mechanical group out of Houston, which they're not familiar with all the berming and everything that we've got on. It's just a standard lighting plan, so it's, you know, it needs to obviously be customized for the site, including the cutoffs or, you know, lowering and all that. So, that's still subject to permit.
Though, asking our staff to customize the electrical, you know, the electrical site plan, you're the PE.
Right.
Your ordinance only states that it will be shielded.
Okay.
No height was discussed in these meetings here.
Correct.
In the neighborhood meeting, it apparently was discussed. So, staff will hold them to shielding.
Right.
But as far as...
Height.
Height, we're nicely asking.
Right.
And he's correct in that the lighting plan is a separate civil sheet than the site plan.
Right.
And so, it's not required to be approved by P&amp;Z and council. So, we've seen it. We've commented to them that they have to show us the shielding. It was not shown on there.
Right.
But, we have not commented, please generously lower the standard. That would be... If you want to make that a requirement, that would have to come from this group to make the requirement.
I'm also assuming these would be LED lights, which with today's technology, you have the ability to control the direction anymore. It's not like the old lights were, when you turn a light, it spreads out three hundred and sixty degrees.
Right.
You can't use LED lights to shine straight down and don't go back as well. So, you can't limit the impacts of lighting with the modern technology and those types of things.
And I wasn't at the meeting... Was there a height discussed?
I checked my notes from the meeting we had with the architect, and he specifically said that there were low-impact lights that have been used in instances like this where the level was lower, and they were shielded, and he would put in the minimum number required for what was necessary for the fire lane going in behind. I did not bring that note with me. No, there was no specific height mentioned in that meeting. But he's... No, but he's... I didn't write it down, so I can't say. But, it specifically said a low-impact light.
Hey, can I... I just need a clarification, because in the theater world, that's a whole different term now. So, low-impact light, is that actually the light source coming out, not actually the height of the light?
No, he had implied... He had implied that it was lower, and he had implied that it had been used at the Holiday Inn in other circumstances similar to ours.
The height was lower? Okay. Because I'm just saying, low-impact lighting is not a...
It would be a low level of light.
Okay. Low-impact lighting in our world is not a height thing, it's the brightness of the light.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing. Ordinance amending a conditional use permit for a four-story hotel building in GB General Business District located at one zero zero five Hawthorne Boulevard in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri.
You have the ordinance in front of you that we've discussed. There are the specific attachments, A and B, to the ordinance that were in the earlier tab, but were not copied under this tab, and so these are copies of them there. The attachments to the ordinance are in sections three and two. There are the red line, dimension plan, there are the red line, green...
So, this is showing the fence stain where it originally was on the original documents?
That's what the red line shows. And actually, that retaining wall that comes... Right now, if you're standing there looking at it, you see the retaining wall that extends to the property in the field. That will be extended to the north and curve back to the west along the back of that fire lane. And so, where that wall ends, then the fence would extend from the end of the wall out to within twelve feet of the property line, because you have a setback on the floor lot for fence at twelve feet of that location. So that, yeah, they're showing it. The red line shows where the fence would be built.
Any discussion, questions?
So, on this one, this one, it's believing it at grade or lowering it to two feet if we approve this?
It is written to leave it at grade. What you see now is what you get.
Are we voting once on all areas of the ordinance, then? So, if we are not agreeing with a part of the ordinance?
Go on passage if you want to see changes to the bill as presented.
Okay.
Like his trees.
Correct.
Yeah.
The grading plan that's before us here says twenty-nine six-foot-tall evergreen trees for screening. Is that... We were talking about specifically pine? Well, I realize the specifications override the drawings in... When you're determining what to do there, but will the specifications say?
There is a landscaping plan that requires... Staff will contact. Calls for fourteen Colorado blue spruce, fifteen Rocky Mountain double spur, fifteen per middle European hornbeam, ten pinochre, eighty-seven boxwood, green velvet boxwood, a hundred and sixty-two big blue... And a hundred and sixty-one dwarf con English.
Okay.
So, that is what meets our... And it does meet our landscaping ordinance requirements, yes.
Okay, far... Opacity in all of the light filtration and everything.
We believe it will, yes, with maturity.
Okay.
Mark, it says that they're requesting to locate the fence... I'm sorry, I'm not trying to jump around. They're wanting to relocate the fence approximately one foot off the north property line rather than sixty feet. So, they're wanting to move their fence...
That was their original request. Planning and zoning commission said no.
Okay.
And so, when we wrote the ordinance, we wrote the ordinance as no.
The ordinance is presented based upon the recommendations presented, so...
Right.
The council wishes to alter or amend those, then a motion to amend the ordinance would be called for.
I think what she's trying to do is, where the red line is right now is where the fence is going to go if we approve this.
Yes.
It's back to the original location.
Thank you.
I think there was a misinterpretation as to the purpose of the fence. If... Instead of a security fence, or instead of a privacy fence, it's in essence a security fence to keep unwanted guests from venturing north there.
Now, it's allowing a buffer.
So, in essence, planning and zoning denied the request of the developer to move the fence. And so, the drawings show the fence staying where it was previously agreed.
Okay.
The planning and zoning did recommend approval of the request to not require the two-foot lowering of the grade. And so, what you have in here, if you're gonna take action, as it's written now, is come forth from the planning and zoning commission. You did it now without amending anything. The fence would stay where planning and zoning recommended, and the grade would not be required to reduce two feet at this time. So, if that's what the council would like to do, it's ready for action.
Well, my only concern with the lowering, I know it's only two feet, but I'm worried about the water towards the building. I think it's not gonna do it much justice if we lower it. I mean, I'm not an engineer or architect, but I think if we left it the way it is, ADP, I don't know.
And you do have it within your authority, and obviously, planning and zoning recommended to honor the request, and we're welcome to do so. And it's why I thought you'd at least have some discussion that there is valid reason for the public to feel that we're moving that agreement as was previously agreed. And it's within your authority to do that, and we can do that. I just wanted to make sure that we had a discussion about that publicly before the action was taken.
And I would clarify that the ordinance specifically says the grading would be allowed consistent with the grading shown on the grading plan. It might change slightly from what you see in the field, so there could still be bulldozers on site. Don't call me and tell me they moved dirt.
I drive by it every day.
They're going to move dirt.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
I move, said bill will be moved second reading by title.
Johnston?
Yes.
Excuse me. Jacobs?
Yes.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Renfro?
Yes.
This is an ordinance approving an amendment to the initial use permit for a four-story hotel building in a GB General Business District located at one thousand five Hawthorne Boulevard in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption or rejection. Johnston?
Yes.
Jacobs?
No.
Watts?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Renfro?
Yes.